Can you bring the meeting to order, in your name and flesh? My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Agler, Trustee Connor will be excused. Trustee Young?
Here.
Trustee Deloitte Manus?
Here.
Trustee McManus, here.
Yeah.
Deputy President, here.
And trustees have copies of the minutes in previous meeting of June 10th. We have a motion to second this prepared.
So move.
Motion made by Trustee McManus is a second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Attention. Aye. This time, we'll open up the meeting to anyone who wishes to address the board and Albert?
Good evening, my name is Albert LaPorte, I'm Fire Chief Champlain. I submitted some bills this past week on our new budget and we're on our way. I was wondering if there would be any questions on any of these bills.
We should have two copies, a two purchase requisition, one for a pair of hip boots at $87.50 and 10 pager batteries at $9 for a total of $90 together, so $177.50.
Not as long as the hip boots aren't included in the board meeting.
No, mine are size 12 anyways, those are default.
Alright, alright.
Is there a need for more than one pair of boots?
At this time, this is for a new member that we have just got back in the department and there is no boots. We are planning on doing a turnout gear inspection in July. There are a lot of boots that are in pretty bad shape. Matter of fact, I had to give up my helmet to this individual. So we may be looking to buy a few helmets and a few pairs of boots as the time goes on. But this right now is just a need of one firefighter because you can't fire fire without boots and we don't have a pair for him. So at this time, it's just to get the one pair of boots right now. Okay, I will probably be in the outcome, be in order in five or six more pair. And when I do, I will give them Mr. Sullivan's, okay? Because he said he may need something. But this is just to get us so that we're all up to snuff for now.
Have a motion to accept these requisitions as prepared?
So move.
Second?
Second.
The motion made by Trustee Young, second by Trustee McManus, all in favor?
Aye.
I had a call, Joy received a call from Champlain-Peterbilt Friday. We have had 144 in for our PM, our yearly PM. They found out in the process that it had a cracked manifold, which they ordered comes to the price of $350. The PM should be done, everything will be adjusted at this time and this may cost probably $1,500 till we do the whole truck. I will know after they get done, tomorrow's going in at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning. As they have known, the village has known, Chuck has known, 145 was having a problem with belts. We were spinning the serpentine belt. That was a seized up pulley. Ford Motor Company has gone good for it. It has been fixed, but in the process voltage regulator went on. Voltage regulator itself was paid forward by Ford Motor Company. But in the process, it spiked the radio. The radio is being repaired, it should be put back in the rig tomorrow. I have been in touch with the insurance. I don't think the radio will cost much more than $250 had it repaired compared to $2,500 for a new radio. That should be installed tomorrow. So by then, I'm hoping that everything will be back online. I believe that the village has gotten booklets on the fire district. I myself don't know what is happening with that. Nobody has got back to me and I don't know if we're gonna have a meeting or what. You may know before me, but as soon as I know, I'll let you know.
It's July 15th, 6:30.
Hey, okay.
That's the 10th of June.
July 15th, 6:30. Okay, I knew that there was other things that were going on and I didn't have the initial start-up of this and I'm more or less just sitting back trying to see where it's going. And I would like to be there this firm, put this in case. And I want to thank you for your time this evening.
The 10 was scheduled for then evening.
Right there?
Yeah.
July 15th, 6:30.
Yeah.
I thank you, if there's no other questions, have a nice evening.
We'll continue now with the business of our meeting, we do have a presentation discussion at 7:30. At this time, we have nothing to report, we'll move on to trustees' reports. Trustee Young?
On the sewer project, I have nothing to report other than, I guess we say what's in correspondence, the bid date has been moved back to July 9th. Dave Robinson placed a call to talk, I returned the call and he was supposed to return the call, so I didn't get to speak to him today, he never did get to me, so I don't know. I have no further update than what's in the correspondence. The only other thing, I'd like to request an executive session to continue the executive session of the last meeting, personnel matter.
Your second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Trustee McManus?
Okay, I had a meeting with Engineer Sam Hayman and Bob on the 19th of June. We looked at Church Street and Prospect Street and discussed with Sam what we were looking for in terms of a proposal. As a result, he generated the correspondence that the board had over the weekend with a maximum work total engineering for the job being $17,500 and $6,000 for preparation of preliminary plans and specs. Bob and I both gave him that the board was looking for options, his estimate of what various pieces of the work would cost. And so we do have that, he would be billing on hourly basis, moving on to exceed amount of $6,000 for the plant inspection and $17,500 for the entire job.
So the $6,000 is included in the $17,500?
I believe so, yes. And I would assume the $17,500 is based on work on both Prospect and Church. Should the board find that there is less work that we can afford to do, we might find that his cost would be lower, I would expect. And so that, we'll put that before you. I'm not sure as to whether you'd like to make a decision on this tonight. With the postponement of the sewer project, we do have time, but probably not a huge amount of time in terms of getting him started on the study or getting whatever bill that we want the fire started today.
I think it would be useful if we could get the study out of the way, know what we're dealing with, so that if it's something that's feasible, we could go out to bed at approximately the same time in Gordier. If we're gonna just wait and then start up, we're gonna be that much behind all the way.
Well, then I will make a motion, we're just taking a look at the proposal that we received from Sam on the street work. I'll make a motion that the board hires Sam for a maximum of $6,000 to be billed out in his charge-out schedule for preliminary plans, specs, cost estimates on Church and Prospect.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Trustee McManus, seconded by Trustee Young, is there discussion? Just trying to find that piece of car that's...
The car's blue cam...
Yeah. In terms of the mileage, this is just reporting mileage, that would be mileage on the job and from the job, am I correct?
No, I believe that would be mileage to and from also.
That's a, I don't know, one point that I'd rather not see to and from, but the rest of the contractor is proposal I have an agreement with. Anybody else have any?
I just, one question, maybe it was already discussed, where the funds would come from for...
That's a very good question. I had assumed out of the general fund to begin with and then, I believe this would be eligible for reimbursement from the bond where you borrowed the money, is that right? We could then cover it for the whole, for that, okay. So we'd probably, depending who to start. On the issue of mileage, I would prefer not to be charged also for mileage, but in light of the much more reasonable charges for, you know, out-of-pocket expenses at cost as opposed to a 2.5 percent markup, rates of service at a half to a third of what we're paying now, ideally can quibble. We are currently paying mileage anywhere under our...
I think, I think too that when we hired him in the past, he's been an employee and as an employee, we're not paying here, we're hiring a consultant. I think in any consultant, basically, they're not paying that mileage as part of the expenses. It's just figured in differently, that's all, you know? Any comments or questions?
You know, it also comes, that's covered by the not exceed also, so we're still looking at $6,000 total.
I guess when I, it seems important to him because he keeps putting it in there, so when I look at it, well, okay, if it's significant to the individual, I guess I don't mind.
I think it's probably something standard that anybody would charge as far as doing that type of work.
There's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion carries. I'll get in touch with him and tomorrow, see him...
I don't know, Mr. Keeble will draw the contract for us?
We have him draw the contract for us, yes, I think.
Okay, I had a report from the beautification committee, the committee met a couple of Saturdays ago. They wanted to report to the board that they are pursuing the flower pots for either side of the door in the village office. They had a problem with the original plan for the concrete pots, the contractor who did them has gone out of business and Marion has been searching around North Country with no luck. If anyone knows of any places to get them, I'm sure she'd be glad to hear. If she can't find them, they are going to go ahead with either the barrels filled with flowers or possibly some cedar constructed pot, so that will be something we'll be looking for.
Anything wrong with like the, those plastic urns, the large ones? They're very durable and they, you know, they don't look that bad and they're not that expensive.
Yeah, I don't know if they had considered that, I'm not really sure. If I can pass the under, I think she watches the meetings pretty faithfully, so. It didn't, it was carried away. That's true, those barrels are hard to move, it's coupled with strong bags.
There was a, I guess a part-time, summertime business that used to be the A and P parking lot by Cumberland, had corners that moved to the military turnpike extension south of Route 3 and they specialize in concrete worn ornaments and planters, benches, all sorts of things, they may have something. I don't know whether they've returned this year, whether they are there for the 96 year, but they have been there for the last eight, 10 years, been doing business.
Okay, well, do you happen to know the name? You were talking about the opposite of the rest. Oh, okay, do you think that when you get it, you could just give her a quick call? That would be great. Just in thinking back to the last Saturday, we probably should notify my partner also since they submitted a proposal, okay. Okay, on, work treasurer Dawson copied me and then I think all of you, is the bill for advertising as a result of the sewer project? It's a total of $582.18. This is legal advertising on the bids for the sewer project. Now, in reviewing this, it seems to me reasonable that we would pay for the first advertising, I guess that would be standard practice, that we would pay to have the notice published that we are onto bid. However, the subsequent 5/8, 5/13 advertising that was done, it's not at all clear to me that that's something the village should be responsible for.
Why, I agree with you. Perhaps we can request that our engineers maybe adopt not paying for that.
Oh, right, that's where they are, you don't have to write down.
It's outside of our control.
But yeah, that's where they, that's where they hope for, that's the one, that's where we want.
It looks like...
Why don't they corporate? I don't know what I'm saying.
The 5/8 and 5/13, I understand for the one, 607. Then the next, the third item that isn't crossed out is 5/6, 5/8, 5/13. Is that... Is that a duplication or? Didn't notice that before.
No, they ran it, it's all day they ran it.
But obviously, they submitted the batches where the 605, so...
Actually, there's two bids, they have different bid advertisements, one for the general construction and the rest for the electrical and the, there was electrical, there was general, electrical and there's three bids that they have taken for, or two, two bids, I think.
They all went out at the same time?
Yeah, but they did two different bid notices, they did a bid notice on the actual construction, they did another one on the electrical and what was it, there's three parts of the bid, the collection system.
Right.
So one bid was just the general and the other bid had the other two bids. So, so the bids, there's two separate bids that ran, I see they ran the same days, there's two different bid advertisements, one was for the collection system, that would've been for the electrical and the other part of it.
Huh, okay. I guess...
No, you mean... There's three separate contracts.
Right.
So they did two bid notices, one contract was a one bid notice, the other two bid, the other two contracts were another bid notice.
But that should've, that was done, that all went out on the 6th?
Well, they advertised a few days though.
Right. There's something, the 6th, the 8th is on 13th.
Yeah, so they advertised a three days.
Right, and there are two different issues here, one's known as the bid of the one wastewater collection, so it makes sense that they...
Because they put up the bid on the collection system.
Right, but we have to determine which one was repetitious to ask how much we pay for it, because we're not alone, we don't...
Well, the first one that went out was they forgot something.
Right, so the second one looks like the same thing two days later, except they had one line added.
And there are different rates too, I wonder why? Why don't we just send them a copy of this and ask them if they will be concerned with it, and then we can try to fly, give us an explanation, because you're gonna have to analyze. That's fine, I had no problem with that.
It's interesting that the rates, in one case where it's low, a lower number of lines, I can see where the rates will decrease, say, if you have more lines, but it's not doing that.
Right, and it's not, none of them are Sundays, which would change the rate, Monday's and Wednesday. And there will be additional bills coming in, we're not finished yet because the adenda, we still have to be billed.
When you run an ad for three days, the rate's cheaper than running it for one day. See, the first time they ran it out only one day, so the rate's more, and when they ran the rate for three days.
So it's possible that, oh, I don't know, I think it's a good idea...
It's still need to get an explanation and do we have the office of the ads?
They must've run the 5/6 on the wastewater collection and the 5/6 on the notice of bidders. Together, and then they, the one on 5/8 is a little bit...
Then they un, they added, changed their...
That's the one they corrected on 5/8, that'd be the 167, 48. Now on the 13th, it'll be referred to the other two, for the...
We need to look at the actual ads and see what the ads said.
Normally, you'd run this once, right? Is that, is that correct? Does the village just pay to run one day, it's all in, and then it's over? We know they ran it a second time because they corrected it. Right. That's a very good idea to get papers and...
Oh, we have the actual ads.
Okay. As we send this off to them, we probably should be checking ourselves too, just so we're sure, even calling the press republicans to verify what, if it's a place to buy. I spoke to Walter Young at Regional Planning to discuss the progress of the EDA grant. We, they are still looking at the June 26th, 28th deadline. I believe they've, I think he sent some forms in or they should be arriving soon for the mayor's signature.
Well, we have one set of forms that arrived that went out today, that we should have tomorrow.
Okay, and John Marshall will be in the area the week of July 8th and he'll be traveling to Plattsburgh and to Champlain to check on the progress of the existing grants. And that's all I have.
Okay, I just have two pieces of information to communicate to the board. I met with Woody Thistle just the other day, he mentioned to me that he is currently looking for an additional or a second sheriff-type vehicle that like what we have now, and I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board, especially because if we were to put something like that on the road, there's insurance and anything like that to be concerned about. The second thing is, I got a phone call from a guy, I think it's, who works for A.J. Prescott, he's trying to sell our municipality water meters, very similar, I think, to the presentation that we had a little bit before by his competitor, and I just invited him in for July 22nd, so he'll be here at 6:30 to Mexico West, what does meters do that's unique? And that's all I have. Chuck?
Nothing at this time.
Work treasurer?
I covered you all with hearing reports in June, first held out, if you have any questions, just be able to call us, we'll be listening to it. That's all of that.
And move on to the superintendent's report.
You have my written report, do I have any questions on that?
Gas meters still working?
Yes, you'll get a reading on that next, next month or month.
Gonna be the first of the month, you have the first meeting of the month?
Yeah.
On this sewer problem or this, this problem was in the right way, is that our responsibility on that?
It was very difficult to tell you what, whose responsibility it was. Nigel, they have a, they did have a clean out away from their building, it was outside the clean out, clean out wasn't as far away as it was standing. I just, I made a judgment call to fix it, that's all. It was all a pot, I just don't know. Close enough to the street to say it could be, and extended far enough off the street to say maybe it wasn't, but there was, there were pots that were right at the edge of the road.
On the, on the meters for the town, who says we? How many, how many did we people, did we have involved in doing that? The way it's...
No, I know, I...
It's not like more than one?
No, I write down we, the department.
Okay, with the work that, we had three items, we had a request to do at Kimbex, so the collection box, that's on, that's on Main Street through the edge of the parking lot.
Right, that needs to be spruced up.
Right, but the box that we worked is done to messes.
Yeah.
Okay, what about the other two items?
The other two items, I contacted Don Gordier, no, Jeff Locke, he was supposed to take care of that particular washout business, and he, he said he was gonna put some fabric in there. I haven't seen that it's got done, I, I've got it down on my work, things to do to call or to get, remind. The hydrant was scheduled for this week and I'd like to beg off it because I might get rid of some sludge. I think we need to start making some runs up to Franklin to get rid of some sludge and spend, become backed up here. That's gonna be, you know, it's gonna take a little time, load a truck up and miss some of that.
Have you been in touch with the business in regards to their complaints and what we're doing to try to address them?
No, I haven't. I probably should. Okay, I'll do that.
I have a question for you. On the backhoe, is that the same backhoe that we had alternator difficulty with, that we're having battery trouble with now?
We had...
It was on the truck, on a truck.
That was on a truck, this is what we call, we blew a couple of fuses and a couple of augerings and nothing went on with it. But this, that's about five years old and that's the original batteries, five years ago, half of the cross on.
Can't complain about that?
No, no. I just wanted to follow you, you know, stretch them out as long as I can, but when I can't, I can't. This is the time you can kind of get away with it.
On the light poles on Rollins Street?
Yes.
I thought we determined it wasn't a problem.
We determined that there wasn't a short circuit problem, but there's evidently a leak, and I've gotta talk with them again too, because they were supposed to, they were supposed to get back with me and tell me why it was tagged out. The guy who came out and looked at it said that it was tagged out. No, I can't, I don't have access to his, his boxes where the wire is running to the ground, you know, it was tagged... Well, it's a tagged out walkout, you know, and if somebody was working on it, there's some kind of a condition that shouldn't be, shouldn't be run on it, then they tag it and it was tagged. And he had no idea, they will not turn it on, that's, that's a why, you don't turn it on, it's not your tag. So he didn't turn it on.
He didn't have a light, turn the light on?
Yes, yeah, turned the switch on.
Who's tag it was on?
It's a NIC tag, but it was someone else in the, in NIC, I didn't know a particular person. So I've got, you know, I've got a call...
Who was tagging it on it?
I do not know.
Doesn't make sense that someone can't remove it though.
Oh, yes it does, all we can do, yeah, yes it does, talk to your safety man.
Why would that...
Why, I have no explanation, it's, when it's tagged out by someone, that, every person under OSHA laws has to, has to be the one who puts it back.
Well, it retired five years ago.
Wow, well, yeah, I mean, well, that's, that, you would have to take that in consideration, I guess, but they know who this person was and he's in existence, so they were going back and talked to him.
I mean, if he's got a report on it and a piece of paper that says this is what we find when you open it up?
Yeah. I know, I know.
So what's gonna be done with it?
Well, I wanna know what you wanna do with it, the wires are out. Those very wires are out and there's no way they'd want it, we just red that and everything else. We, to change the heads and to go through all the performances, no, that would not be, but now if you want us to dig it and have somebody hook up the wires one to the other to the other again, we wouldn't do that. I would suggest if we do that, we put it covered.
How crucial is that light?
Lights.
It's all of them, they're talking about...
There's quite, there's about five of them involved in this.
Well, how long, I mean, weren't these working?
L two, three, four, seven, and thirteen.
Weren't these working sure well ago?
I don't know when they were working, you know, I don't work there that often at night.
I'm worried we're going to end up on America's Funniest Home Videos, discussion. If you took our discussions on these street lamps and you spliced them end to end, it would absolutely be anything that's ever been on any of those shows.
This was, you know, you have to start on realizing, and I didn't realize, and I don't think you guys do, that we own these, these lights. When it really started out, and they will not take them.
Do we have a problem we're trying to address the, is there?
Yeah, I want to get them going. Want the lights lit?
Why, is there inadequate lighting? We have thirteen lights or something up there?
Yes, but you have four in a row that are out. And if you do have a light that's out, I mean, you are paying to, you are paying a service charge on each one of these lights, you are paying to have them going. You're paying electricity, you're not burning.
And we've had some discussion about having only half the number of lights.
And for, for less money than what we're paying them?
For less money, we made a motion and we rescinded that on this issue.
Because we were told that there wasn't a problem?
There, there wasn't a short circuit problem. That's what I pretend, yeah. Not the lights on, lights off. I thought it was both. And that you have a contract with.
And the, I guess on this whole issue here, there's one issue of, is there a safety concern?
No, that's what you want to be.
Second thing is, is then does the, there's something for three thousand or three thousand five hundred dollars that we could pay money to have someone do something?
Right, that would have been, that would have been the same thing that NICIC was going to do, change the heads, and you don't have to do that. NICIC would be, would be the cheaper one to do that.
Okay, so if we were to change the heads, then essentially we're really only dealing with one issue, which is that the board wants to.
No, you still have the wire that goes through the ground, it gets electricity from one to the other.
But we never had a quote to do that.
No.
And I thought we were going to get a quote from that at one time. Well, they found a ground where, that was one of the issues originally.
We decided there was, oh, I decided there wasn't any short circuit problem, but evidently it's an open circuit problem.
It's a difference.
Well, one is, no, electricity doesn't go anywhere. It's just a broken wire. Doesn't go anywhere, it's not electrocuted, something, that's what we tried to determine, whether there was a short circuit that was.
I think we have to.
Try to get, I'll try to put this to rest.
Chuck? I think we have to do something with this. We just can't let it be the way it is.
I know.
Okay, well, I wanted to find out, let's distill down the issues. The issues are made twofold, getting the wire connected, and then secondly, what lights does the board want on? And then I guess that begs the question, if we want other lights on, do we need to connect those wires?
Yes.
Okay, so then we have to get those wires connected, and only NICIC can do that because only NICIC tagged it?
That's tagged?
No. No, only NICIC can turn the switch back on.
Okay.
That person.
But an independent qualified contractor can.
They not go inside that box.
Therefore, only NICIC can do the repairs?
Can turn it on. He can do the repair while it's off, while it's turned off, but only NICIC can turn it on.
Ken wanted to know, could someone else do the repair?
Yes.
Forget about turning the lights on.
But how does he know that the repair is unproven? Turn it on?
I don't know. I know.
What would happen if we never discussed this again and didn't do anything?
The lights stay off, and we pay money for lights that are not.
Yeah, you're getting another letter from Baltimore.
Never got a letter on the lights?
No, but you would. You will virtually, somebody's going to write. I know that.
Won't be me.
Well, we'd have to pay for electricity, it wouldn't be a problem, would it?
Well, I still like the NICIC option of having half the number of lights on with twice, more than twice the luminance, I think it was.
Yes.
That's still something that's favorable in my mind.
I thought it was too.
And I think what the action that Bob needs to take would be to do whatever he needs to do to get that, the wire, that, that open circuit closed, and get the juice turned back on there. Then as a separate and independent issue, the board can act to say, all right, we're going to, we're going to go now with half the number of lights with twice the luminance.
But I think if we did that, NICIC would put the, rewire that.
That's basically what they wouldn't do.
So they wouldn't do that at all?
No.
I thought they would do that, you know, that one.
They don't want to touch the end of their wires. That's, that's the whole multi-directional gears.
Do you have a clear plan for what we need to do, or?
We'll go up and see what we got. Run some wires between them.
We're going to do that, are we?
We'll do the digging. We'll do the wiring of the conduit, run the wiring of the conduit. I think that'd be the cheapest way.
I don't know.
No.
How many feet of conduit are we looking at?
Twelve hundred feet.
Wait a second, twelve hundred feet?
It's about twelve hundred feet around that road. One to the other, to the other, to the other.
So you're taking up every single, all thirteen lights?
You got, yeah, because the last one has an open one, number fourteen, two, three, four is open. And number seven. Two, three, four, seven.
I think we need a diagram of the street.
They start at.
I want to see a diagram of the street, I want to see this, 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 and this.
Since NICIC knows those lights are not in service, we're not paying for the electricity because our electricity is metered, right? So then it's not like we're losing.
I think we're paid by the light.
No, you pay by the light.
No matter what they want.
By the light, by the light, by the year.
Okay, well then, since they know they're not working, couldn't we just ask NICIC to drop the cost of those four lights? They're very well aware, I mean, it seems we should at least do that right away. We shouldn't be building something that they know we're not using.
We should ask whether they are or not, it's another thing, but we should ask.
Past that point, I think it's really a judgment call in terms of the lighting up there. I walked up there when it was dark, and it was okay to walk outside the road now. You know, I don't know how much we want to spend.
Tell me what you want. Eliminate it. The distances are going to change, no matter what happens.
Well, I'd like to spend as little as possible and get as much light as we can.
Well, you'll take that same distance with thirteen lights. Going down, let's say going down Elm Street, in that same distance, we have at least thirteen lights?
No, you have a lot more, a lot less. You do have a lot less.
So why would we need thirteen lights in that short distance?
You don't.
So we had a motion.
Yeah, the reason why I, the reason why I spoke about that was the fact that the, if the lights are there and there is an accident, what you've got to do is end up taking the poles down. They'll have to be removed. Because if you leave them out, and that's, that's why I brought the whole subject up to start with. You leave them.
If it was because somebody said they put a pole and got a shot.
That was part of it.
I mean, that's how this whole thing started.
Yeah, I remember, I think that was it. But if you have to pull up and you don't, you've heard it often enough from, from.
Well, if there's no light, then it's stupid to have a pole.
Right.
A pole would have to come out anyway.
And we own the poles. So wherever, if there was another place in the village that needed a pole, we could put it up. And it wouldn't cost us anything, because we're already paying electricity for those lights right now. Is that what I heard?
You have to buy a, a one piece foundation.
There would be no additional electric charge, because we're paying for those thirteen, whether they're working or not. So we can put three up the, that won't cost us any more than one.
Only one.
So are we, are we going to run lights in the village, asking them to reduce our billing? Since the lights are unserviceable? In service?
You still, I still have the problem, what do you do with those? If you've got thirteen lights, well, you need seven. That's the bottom line. You need seven, we've got thirteen up there, so you've got six lights and poles that you don't need, that we're paying for, which just seems like a rather ridiculous situation. Right, the board voted once to eliminate those six poles and to go with just seven. Right, so if that would, if that's still a feeling of the board, which seems to make sense to me, then we let NICIC know that, and then perhaps NICIC can advise us in terms of underground wiring, what needs to be done there, and then we have to move and take care of that wiring. Just, just to say, well, reduce the billing and without doing anything with the poles, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, exactly, how much money would we have saved if we'd done that when this first came up over any months? I mean, I mean, I think we need to do, have a plan for the future, but in the meantime, we're paying for lights that everyone knows.
Don't work.
Don't work.
All right, I'll call them. There anything else on that?
Well, you can call them, and you can try and get them to reduce the billing for the lights that aren't working, but what about the replacing?
No, that's what I was going to call them, to replace the wire, you mean? Get rid of the poles.
Is that what the board wishes to do? We had a motion at one point to do that.
Just to have the seven poles, get rid of six. And they're going to put in the, the extra for the, the new type of lighting, new heads and all. Well, the only thing we'd have to do is rewire underground.
There were two options that had seven lights though, and one, I think the way that we voted wasn't the way that we wanted to go after we had a guy come in and he talked to us or anything. I think we can tell you that, I think it was option four was better, left the one.
That was what I think the board voted on, and then, I think they asked him, well, don't do anything, because when he felt it was the problem, it wasn't the problem, so we don't, we shouldn't do anything. But.
Do we have any idea what this requires to rewire?
We'll find out.
A couple months at least.
At least.
There anything?
Oops.
Option four, we just voted, it was approved. Classification service number three, full maintenance, NICIC will rule all thirty existing lights and replace with seven new one hundred high-pressure sodium monomers. One hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents per light, including all, which includes all maintenance manager. And that was going to save us around nine hundred dollars a year, all we're paying now.
That sounds good, but I think we need to find out how much we're going to have to invest to be able to do that. That, I don't, a twelve hundred feet of conduit wiring, it sounds expensive to me, I have no idea, but it seems like it could be a random pricing thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so by the next board meeting, Bob will have a cost to figure as far as.
We got a call today from Federal Surplus Property, and I just wanted to make you aware that there's a thirty KW skid-mounted two forty four eighty three phase generator for three thousand dollars available. It's pretty big, really. That's going to be something that you may, you're probably better off just getting the power they want you to get for a particular thing. I just wanted you to be aware that they called me. I had been asking them over the years to, if they ran into something, to call us. So that's it. You have a purchase requisition for a little tractor that needed to be repaired. Price was a little, it's a little pricey on.
Unprojected, they should.
Yeah.
My goodness.
Where was it done?
The doors.
How much, how much the value of the piece of equipment?
Oh, three thousand dollars.
That's a lawn mower?
Yeah.
And that's not that old, is it?
It's got a, it's all right here.
Yeah.
A little, little tractor, it's three thousand dollars?
Go buy one. You didn't, you didn't buy that one?
Yes.
A riding tractor?
A ride, a lawnmower, a ride lawnmower.
But it's also, you know, it's got a double, a much bigger deck on it.
They also put the small lawnmower on it. We do need a new hand lawnmower. Bush, jubby.
We just bought one of those two years ago?
That's correct. I showed Mr. Igua it's got a crack in the crankcase, and it's a true cycle, and I'm kind of disgusted, but it does.
When we buy these, what do we usually buy for a lawnmower?
That was a lawnmower. That's a good man.
No, usually with, with lights, like a Toro or even a lawnmower, I thought there was like a two-year warranty on these, you know, unconditional kind of warranty on them usually.
I didn't find.
And even on some, there's like a five-year warranty.
I'll look and see what the warranty is about. It was only a one year. I might be wrong, but we did buy it at Sam's.
Doesn't matter where you buy it.
No.
Another thing is, if we buy something like that and use it a lot, maybe it wouldn't hurt to look into some type of maintenance agreement. I've got them all in my mind.
Is there a motion to approve this purchase requisition, the tractor repair?
I'll move on it.
Okay, is there a second?
Well, second is Ben Darnley.
Motion made by Justice Darnley, second by Justice Young. Further discussion, no favor?
You're all those things are good.
Aye.
Another thing, on that, which lawnmower, I mean, if it isn't covered by any kind of warranty, maybe a letter or a stationery signed by you to the company saying, we purchased this because we thought it was a good piece of equipment, you're kind of disappointed it broke down.
I would like to say.
And maybe they'll ship us a new one. Sometimes that happens for DR. Yeah, on village stationery, and they might be interested in something like that.
Okay, and we, we did do that, the repairs that we talked about doing, that was always happening this morning.
Ken just offered to write the letter.
You have to agree?
No, I'm just saying, listen, I'm very good at doing that.
Okay. Any correspondence?
No.
Any correspondence?
Item one, correspondent, excuse me, the current labor labor regarding the transportation and floor is to be for treatment plant and water.
Okay, how do we stand with the items that were mentioned?
Well, some of those items are going to be done in the upgrade, and that's why you have the law extension on the repair.
Actually, it doesn't look too bad.
No.
They're minor things, maybe it looks like.
The majority are minor things.
But some of the things, like, you know, a clean work environment, that shouldn't be anyway.
Yeah, well, that's, that has been corrected.
Especially since we were working shorthanded then, right? That was still in March before we had, we were a full staff. And given the choice, you have to have a clean work environment, the water plant is better, so.
Absolutely.
Better than it came out the way it did and not the reverse.
Not the reverse of it.
Right, the water plant was a natural.
Correspondent from Plattsburgh, no, County Chamber of Commerce, regarding the Red Champlain basin plant. And first correspondent from Secretary of State, Senator Ted Law, offering ways to accept their department, to access their department. Item four is correspondent from Christian, related information on the formation of prior decisions.
I've got a comment on that. From what I've read over, it seems basically like all of that correspondence is saying, at least that section, that he can afford us to read carefully, was basically just saying, well, it's possible to do it if people in, are, are in agreement about that either by permissive referendum, or, or if both boards are in agreement, subject to permissive referendum, which kind of would imply to me that it can be driven a permissive referendum anyway, you know, for people to sign a petition. But my, my question is, I'm unclear on. But my, my question is, I'm unclear on the taxing authority, you know, in that case. Is that given by the town or does the fire board have the authority to tax?
Maybe the board of commissioners has it. I'm not sure who collects it, whether it's collected by the town.
It's collected by the town.
They tell the town what to tax?
Yes. And that's something that the town and the board of commissioners work out as compared to the village. There's a board of commissioners that, that, you know, work with the town to develop the budget.
And that could be done, and the board of commissioners, as I read, can either be appointed or elected, depending on the way things go.
I believe that's true, yes.
Wow, okay.
But that's probably dictated by the referendum.
Well, that's also why instead of us coming up to talk to the board, to answer those kinds of questions that we have, also to kind of guide us for proper steps.
An exclamation request from Mr. Mr. Sebrowd.
We need to have a motion on this. At the last meeting, we had a request from another resident from the same area and the board voted to accept the property, providing that the process goes through. We would need a similar resolution for this property and then we need to talk to the board because the board, I'm not sure if it was presented to the town board at their last meeting, which I'm doing. Well, there's only, there's a public hearing that has to take place within 20 days of the time that it's presented, petition is presented to the boards. So we have to watch that as well. What are your feeling on this particular piece of property?
Well, I think. I'll make a motion that we accept.
No, second. A motion made by Trustee Del, first second by Trustee Connor, that Village would accept the annexation, property proposed for annexation. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good night to them, and then we can carry on to the next step.
Item six is correspondence from the DeCave brothers regarding the intended closure of 221 permission traffic. Is there some problems up to date?
I would like to support your request that we send a letter to the province to collect also because we do use that for entry when we get our stone and gravel, that type of thing. And it would be quite a distance for us to travel if we went another direction.
Anything to do with that? Maybe the letter out tomorrow.
And maybe copy the KOS over.
Item seven is the addendum from Plough Harbor, change from a big date, July 9th, 1996. Item eight is current and future costs from Plough Harbor regarding the waste water treatment plant.
Some of those numbers were above 2.8, were they not? On page two?
Or further back perhaps? Something that I read about.
No. Oh, good one, yeah, page, page two.
Here.
Based upon the above, the total projects cost are estimated this time to be 2,921,000.
But the later one says that therefore we won't be able to do D.
Right.
And then that brings it to the 2.8. I said, I think that's the conclusion. Their preliminary cause, right now, everything that's in there is 2.9. We will not be able to do alternate D in the collection set.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to mean.
And that brings it to the 2.8, because that's my understanding.
Yeah.
And Bob, you, or I think you contacted them in regards to the $41,000 estimate for moving the pump station?
Yes. Well, when I asked him about that, well, I threw that in, I wanted to make sure it was high. He, it was, the sense that I got from Dave is that they just kind of focused in because when I questioned, oh, well, we're about to pipe it, well, we need the gravity feed piping, well, no, you really don't. You're just sliding it from one end to the other. What you, what costs on one end, you save on the other end, so there isn't any additional gravity feed. Well, I just wanted to make sure we were covered. So this 41,000, it is typical of their, kind of thrown together, throw something in. And then I did, I questioned the 12,000 for the engineering underground, that they should have already done the engineering for the original place. It wasn't until three months ago they wanted to move in.
So now with, you know, the number being thrown in, thrown in high is that the bids are going to meet with the numbers.
Well, I had asked him for that number to give us some sense of easement. What is, what is an easement worth? That number is about 150% the value of the property. Oh, I didn't know why. It's just round in circles for those people. So I was at that 41,000, I don't see any relevance to reality with that 41,000.
Item nine is correspondence to David Robinson of Plough Harbor from Donald Conahan of the New York State D E C regarding the waste water treatment plant upgrade. And also correspondence.
Corresponding to an old business, welcome Steve Madari here this evening again. Some discussion, presentation on the engineering report for the EDA grant.
Can we come up higher? Can we come up higher?
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to reintroduce myself. I'm Adori Perk, I'm from the Central County Area Development Corporation. I'm the acting president and city planner. With me is Steve Kucha from the Engineering and Architectural Firm of, Architectural and Engineering Design Associates. Okay, well, we're here tonight to, to do as we promised, to let you have a look at our preliminary designs and what we're planning to do in preparation for us submitting an application on Friday to EDA. As you recall, at my last meeting with you, a happy coincidence of your telling me that we had received an invitation to bid happened. Since that time, Steve and I have been very, very busy trying to get all of this stuff done.
They don't give you a lot of time.
We asked for an extension and we're told that we couldn't get an extension nor get anyone else. And so on Friday, we have to have the application, yeah. All of you had a, got, had a chance to get a copy of this. The booklet which we transmitted to you includes the preliminary engineering report as well as a copy of the traffic study which we had done previously by Seer Brown from Rochester and which has been submitted to the, to State DOT for approval. With that, I'm going to let Steve kind of walk you through what our plans are. And the components of our plan include essentially traffic improvements, roadway infrastructure, water and sewer.
That's right. Now, what the plan is, is to take off from the end of the existing road while serving Molson at this present time, and extend it approximately 3,100 feet. 3,100 feet, that number came about based on the budget criteria. Along with the road, we're also going to propose a crossing in the ravine. What we hope to use within that ravine are two culvers. Anticipate using about two 48-inch culvers. That may become refined later on, we'll do a whole hydraulic study of the area and look at the terrain that's coming into that, into that crossing, see what potential it falls and may have to deal with. Additionally, we also are going to extend the sewer main. Our plan is to extend an eight-inch main, again, about 3,100 feet. That number again came from the budget numbers. So that's a tough part, we feel we can go with the money that, that was in the grant application. In addition to the sewer main, we're also going to extend a 12-inch water main. And that water main will also be 3,100 feet. That distance again came about with the same, same budget numbers. What we want to do with the sewer main is gravity back to the pump station. We feel the preliminary topography will allow us to do that. And the water main, we'd like to extend it from the, where it turns on to Molson property now. There is a, right, a cross right there, we can take it right, right from there. About 3,000 feet, 3,100 feet.
In anticipation of our doing this, I'd like to review, and I've been bringing my copy here. One of the things that Steve keeps coming back to immediately is what our budget is for this project. We have been talking for two years, a year and a half anyway, with ETA. And we, they had told us that we probably might, we might be eligible to receive about $600,000. When, in January 26th, when we submitted our preliminary application, our project was about $844,000. And so the invitation to bid is for 75% of that at 633. In the, in, just to review with you, on page nine and 10, we looked at infrastructure costs, tried to work with $844,000 to maximize the number of lots and the development which we could do in phase one. So as Steve has outlined, there are essentially costs which we have put together for unit costs for the sanitary sewer water mains and streetlights. Roadway, the ravine crossing is something that we've had a lot of difference of opinion within, within our groups of how much that's going to cost.
The ravine crossing could prove to be a little more costly than we've estimated. It really won't know until, until you get into a, until we contractors actually look at it.
We've talked about using a lot of.
We baked use a lot of the existing material available on the site since there is a lot of it. And Molson would love to get rid of some of theirs.
And that would help us a lot in defraying some of the costs. So we've already begun to talk with them about depositing.
They're, they're looking to get rid of some of their fill, so we're, we're in the process of. Well, considering stockpiling some of this material closer to this crossing so that it will be available at the time.
The roadway improvements are in there and we'll talk a little bit about what those roadway improvements, those are the ones on Route 11. We're estimating about $100,000. Then there are some other items. Our traffic study and permit fees are lower than we anticipated them to be when we first, our pre-application estimated them to be about 20,000. And our traffic study was 10,000 and the permit is 2,000. So that's where we are. Our engineering, we, we told you that we would put in a line item for project inspection and that is there. We feel that that's a pretty liberal number based on how long we think the project will be.
We're hoping the project stays about a 15-week timeframe or less than that and that will allow an inspector $1,000 a week.
So we, we felt that that, that would be your inspector and that would be, that would be the line item that, and I think we talked with Bob about the inspector that.
Yeah, Bob just mentioned it a week, was a goal to use in the past.
Legal and administrative costs, those include our application, all of those application costs and contingency. It was nice to be able to put the money we didn't spend in the traffic study with contingency.
We roll that.
So these fees are very similar to the things that you have in the preliminary application. We massaged the numbers a little bit, come up with the same total. Then we've listed the regulatory permits which we will need and included for you some of the kind of typical details that we expect to use.
Construction details that when it comes time that the grant's approved, the final design that we might view, part consider usually.
Probably one of the things that. Jane Torres?
Not, not such a change, it's just a problem.
Okay. Let's turn a little bit, let's turn to the traffic study and talk a little bit about their recommendation.
3200 feet brings you to what lot?
To the, to the beginning of 13 and 14.
We're almost to the, almost the prospect. Where one lot is showing a prospect.
Really good, although we might say Jane Torres, go all the way to prospect. That was our goal.
If, if it goes through that, if the bids come in and the budget is over, we'd like to go with the prospect. That would be the ideal scenario.
How much more feet?
We'd be looking at probably four, 500 more feet. But we do intend to extend the gravel road out of the prospect like we recently talked. We had the paving at 3,100 feet and the whole gravel road the rest of the distance.
What, what specification is that 3,100 feet at?
We'd like to provide 15 inches, well, first of all, the road will be stripped and there'll be a geotex that'll be laid down, 15 inches of gravel and then four inches of asphalt, two inches of binder.
Is that.
Roadway with a 28 feet, including two 12-foot shoulders.
Right, 12-foot diameter, 12-foot shoulder.
That's from the earth, four, four inches.
That's something we want to talk about. We may want to beef up the gravel rather than beef up the paving. From what we've seen occurring on the site right now, money well spent may be better on, on the gravel base. Now, Bob may have a different idea. But with that subbase, I think that, with the existing soil conditions as they are, I think the money would be better spent for a thicker gravel base.
So back to page 13 with our recommended improvements, the reason why, this is what we expect that State will require us to do. This is page 13 on the traffic analysis on the back. This includes the widening of Route 11 at the site driveway. That's at the corner of Route 11 and Lawrence Parkett Industrial Drive. I still, I'm concerned about how they've got street signs to leave, but it's a long way. And as you can see, to provide for one 12-foot eastbound left turn lane. And this will be 525 feet long. Then to widen the site driveway to provide for separate left and right turn lanes exiting the site. I think we talked a little bit about this when I was here last time and you can see they're much better at, at doing the design than I was. Which will be the length of the left turn lane, 100 feet, the length of the right turn lane, 300 feet. And as you can see, the signal was not something that they thought would be needed. At this time, we're within the 10-year build-out frame that we anticipated for the project, the year 2006. But what these turning lanes will do will provide the ability for ambient traffic on Route 11 not to be affected by turning movements into the site. Probably the toughest turning movement will still be exiting from the site with a left turn, left turn from the site. But that will affect the people inside the site and not the people on Route 11. I think the State's going to, they would prefer that if there, if there is any tight turning movement that it be on your own site and not affecting the ambient traffic. Wasn't one of the concerns though that the trucks can't gather enough speed so they actually, once they're on the road, do slow the traffic down a lot?
And that, that's because it's a high-bank turn. I want everybody that goes through there, the turn's banked quite a bit. And in this improvement, we'll, we'll remedy that situation.
It's not just the increase in elevation as the trucks have to get off the hill?
It is, the road is at a high-bank rate there. I don't know if you've ever noticed, it's a banked turn. That's right, you come up the hill, you actually drive up the road, it's super elevated. And we'll probably have to correct that during these improvements.
I'm not trying to understand, the banking of the road is.
Well, you don't pull out of Bell Street and you're going, making a left-hand turn, you actually go up and down this way.
The actual road is banked for traffic moving at that rate of speed.
It's a 60-minute road.
That's what it's designed for. And that's why trucks have such a difficult time getting up in there. It's, and actually, that, that road banks, well, off the top of my head, I believe that banks almost 30 inches to three feet across the width of that road, which is quite a bit.
So we will need to accommodate for that so that that will have less of an impact on, on the trucks entering the.
Because that, that's a major problem right now. A contractor working out, there's trucks coming through there in the winter time.
It's wicked when they, they're on Route 11 trying to turn in, make that left turn.
Put you on a slippery road, they really have a tough time.
Okay, so, so the problem then is not the, that they have to make the elevation and, and drive off the hill.
No, the problem is that the road is banked. And the driving against the bank. It is a hill.
Tremendous increase in elevation, right there. It's, it's quite a hill.
Yeah.
And we can't, that, the banking's not going to, going to affect that, is it?
And we can't, that, the banking's not going to, going to affect that, is it?
No. Then, we're going to correct the, the banking problem, that'll have to be corrected.
The initial start of the truck road is, is tough. Then once it gets road, it's, it's hard. And that's what kills you.
That's what kills you. It's like climbing three feet and it's 20 feet, is basically what you have. It's deceiving when you drive that, it's deceiving. When you walk across it, it's like, it's like...
Well, we're ready for your comment. If there aren't any more questions, but we're a ragged on here, aren't we?
I'm very concerned about the quality of the road that you're putting in, and what happens when it goes to gravel, and what the village is going to be stuck with maintaining. You know, in the winter of 97, are we going to be plowing a gravel road? Is that going to be built for traffic? I guess I'm more concerned that the road be built so that the village isn't going to have a maintenance problem. And I can see a conflict. The more road you get, the better off you walk, because the more lots are...
Well, I, I think...
And the more road you build, the, the less firm the road is going to be. So I'd rather have less road, and we don't have to maintain it.
That's the compromise that, that we can do. We can actually shorten up the road, with a higher quality of road.
What I want to hear is something from Bob in our zoning that says, this is the road that we want to industrial park, and then you build as many feet as you can of that road.
This was something that Bob and I were discussing, because I had asked Pam for his analysis of the plan that A, B, C, D, A put together, that Steve put together. And the thing that, that jumped out to Bob was not so much the subsurface, the gravel depth you were talking about, although if you have a concern about that, we would like to see it increased, obviously. But the actual amount of asphalt on the, on top, I think our specifications for a road with the traffic that is estimated in the traffic study would be four inches.
Four inches of asphalt base, kind of binder.
Right, I think you have two in the plan.
We have two, yeah. What's your requirement for topco?
Two.
So it's six inches of asphalt.
Is that...
Especially, I mean, one of the conversations we've had in the past, both the few in the building, was the fact that, you know, we didn't want to have a road that would crumble on us, and we, none of us need that, we, none of us need that.
We, we can look at that and see actually how far, how much would cost it would, would cause, see how far we could go. If it meant a couple hundred feet, I don't think that would be a, a real big, big problem. Because what we may want to look at is shorten the road, but still extending the water and sewer as far as we can, with still access to lots that we want to access.
And if somebody actually positively has to be there, they can extend the road if we don't have the money.
So I don't think the road is a major stumbling block.
I don't want to, I don't want to ask you out of school, not having discussed, but what's, what's the incremental difference when you add for, double the binder course?
Probably going to increase the cost about $15 to $20 a foot.
Okay, so we're probably be at $100 a foot?
About $102 a foot.
All right, as long as you guys can agree with us in terms of the road specifications, I'm satisfied on that. I do have one question about your street lighting. You guys have 13 streetlights listed as $2,200, well, $2,200 each, okay.
Each, right.
I thought it was a total cost per second.
No, that's per light.
Per light, that's around the wire and everything.
Yeah, and like you mentioned, you want it nicely to take care of that, so we're going to make sure that that's how this goes.
And that's into, we noted that in our, um...
I saw it.
Where'd you come up with those figures?
For the, for the streetlights?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a, we did a project recently in town of Plattsburgh, and that was roughly what the, the lights ended up costing. I think it was a little less than that per light.
How many, how many linear feet is that? That would be for 3,100 feet?
Oh, for, for spacing, I have to put, it's about 300 feet of light, 300 feet per streetlight, per light.
And then they're offset?
They're offset on each side of the road.
They're 150 feet apart.
So like 3,600 feet?
He's on the road project.
Yes. We're looking at an area 1,200 feet with 13 lights, meaning three, three times the amount of feet with the same number of lights.
Well, it really depends on the square of the lights. You know, if you're doing a downtown revitalization project or something like that, you're going to want them closer, you're going to want to have lower mounting heights for your lights than from an industrial park.
This spacing may, may change, depending on nicely, you may have some comments, or that, that may change. It's probably be on a safe side than on the, on the high side rather than the low side, it just...
We're trying to meet those, the put candle levels which we set out in our designing guidelines. And that was our goal. But I, I've done a lot of downtown revitalization projects and, and retail projects, and so the kind of lighting that you have and, and what, what kind of lighting you have, and what kind of a feel you want to have, really affects how close they are, how they're spaced, what the mounting height is.
I don't, I don't know if we disagree with what you have, it's what we, we, we are, like I said, looking at something else which we don't totally agree with there, and we think we have too much lighting for the shirt business. I think that's what Ken's looking at.
Yeah, I don't like that.
I think what, what you want to do is, is have whoever's proposing it for you do a photometric analysis. Very quick and simple thing to do that shows you what...
We haven't done that yet, so it just may change.
What the lighting level will be, and what the overlighting level is.
We might have streetlights for sale.
I guess the question is, will nicely take them?
As long as they're not wired into our wiring, they're probably paid for.
But a photometric analysis will really help you make that decision about where there's a lot of light, where there isn't. You know, we're only looking at 0.3-foot candles on the streetlight. The only place we haven't beefed up would be at the intersection. And DOT will require that, I mean, they told us that eight months ago.
I have a question for Bob. And main hall space, well, they like to allow us to go up to 400 feet. Does your cleaning equipment allow you to do that?
Yes. I will tell you how far I can go, yes.
Well, well, you asked for 400.
Yeah. I know some of the stylists don't have that capability, so you've got to shorten up your main hall distances.
We have.
Thank you, though, that's a very nice concern, appreciate that.
Few years ago, we wanted...
That's right.
Few years ago, we didn't have that capability at all.
Oh, I just want to make sure, I'm writing in my notes now, have, so have we agreed to change the, the topco in the binder to 4 over 2?
Because I think we want adequate, but we certainly don't need overkill either.
That's fine.
Okay, in terms of the, the...
You have to tell me if anything's overkill, but I, I don't think so, I mean, I think we can...
Well, I think, there's a cockmate, you need to go with more gravel and less, less asphalt. Or go with more asphalt and keep to 15 inches of gravel.
So if you would...
How much gravel would we lose?
No, we're going to keep to 15 inches, we're going to keep to 15 inches and then bump, bump off the...
You see that?
That's what I'd like to hear.
No, I didn't.
Because we were looking at number 24, and we can give them a copy of that? Is it on your own?
Well, that one is my, my notes all over.
I knew that was going to work.
Yeah, you, you knew that was going to, yeah.
I think paving was going to be an issue.
We talked a little bit about that.
So that, our base?
Was not an issue.
Four, I'm sorry, the gravel?
We're going to, we're going to gravel 15.
15, and the four. But you, but you were concerned that might not be sufficient, you think it's compensated for?
I think we're going to the thicker pavement base, it will be compensated for. That four inches of binder makes it, it does make a big difference on a road. The what's out there right now is four inches of binder.
Yeah.
One of the things that we, Steve and I have been talking about and looking at is the kind of drainage swells that we're going to use on the side of the road, and we're going to do very soft...
And what we'd like to do is...
You're going to four on one for us.
Is increase, yeah, is increase the back slopes on the ditches. The ditch is one of wider than what they probably need to be, but they're easier to maintain, and they're aesthetically pleasing.
A problem we have in our Plattsburgh location and park, these are, they're wet, they have reeds in them, they're difficult to mow, and so they've done some at the Gateway Industrial Park in Deepminton Town, which have much flatter four-on-one kind of slopes, and so that's what we plan to do. Get easier for us to mow, we can probably put trees on the back side of the slope.
Now, one, one problem with...
I think that'll work pretty well.
The four-on-ones though, is that your ditch is in a Y, and you may end up having to obtain easements to maintain the ditches now. That could, that could come up, I don't know if that'd be a problem for the village or not. But that, and that would, that burden of getting the easements, drawing up the easements would fall on us.
Because it'd be outside the road, right away.
It would be outside the road, right away.
But the only ones that are currently affected by that are the two buildings which we have under, one built and one that's under construction. But it's something that you need to consider, because the road life gets wider. But it's flatter and easier and nice to mow, easier to clean.
We don't have to maintain much of the back slope.
No, the, the, the people who...
Right, I understand, what I'm worried about is, I mean, ditch maintenance. The back slope has little effect on them.
But, but that's a problem that we have in Plattsburgh, is if you drive through our park, you will see where the ditches are, and, and it can be unsightly during the summer, and, and we, we would prefer not to have that argument.
We understand, we have some very deep ditches in the village that are constantly maintenance problems. And boy, now it's wonderful.
So if you want to know what these are going to look like, once that Gateway and Deepminton Hill...
And they get people very nervous.
Because once reached on them, then they're wetting. Right, then it's regulated. And then you're in trouble. Then you can't clean.
So is there anything here we have to talk a little bit about? So we've tried to kind of lay these things out for, for the, for the people at Lake Champlain, Lake George Planning Board, who are filling out the application, and are there other things that you think that need to be changed?
I didn't spot anything that I'm trying to do.
Did you have a problem, Bob, with us using, rather than thrust blocks, the Titan, Titan retainer glands?
They tell me they work. I've never used them yet.
Would you like to try them?
I wouldn't like to be the one who failed with them.
For all of us neophytes, why don't we explain what we're talking about here?
Instead of a thrust block, saying a, when your water, when your water returns in direction, you can put a concrete thrust block to hold the force from the water. Instead of doing that, they now make new type of joints that are actually bolted connections, yeah.
You, you're talking about bolted connection or the, the retainers with the wedges and...
It probably is retainers with the wedges and... Either or, it really doesn't matter, it'd be a problem, decide, run a, run a bind.
I might see a little more data on it.
Yeah, no, my next question is... I could provide you some information on it.
Yeah, I can play that very well.
I have one question, which is kind of general in nature, concerning the whole plan. The essentially tax exemption lasts for a specified 20-year period of time, correct? And the clock is already ticking, is it not?
The tax exemption that the IDA grants generally lasts for 15 years. The Molson clock is ticking. The building which we, which we are building has a different kind of structure, because it's a straight lease. And, and usually there's a negotiated tax pay, that's what we do in the town of Plattsburgh, because the industrial development agency owns that forever, unless we sell it, which looks like we're going to. And then that clock would then start.
So if...
So Molson is in year one.
I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, 12 years from now, or, or a long time from now, that the project is, is, I'm hoping that this is not the scenario, but if it, if it were, if several years goes by and say, all of a sudden we get to parcel number 16, parcel number 16's clock will start clicking whenever that project turns to completion, is that right?
When the building is built and it, and it goes to the IDA, at that point, that's when the clock starts. So there should be, in 15 years, one's coming offline and one's coming online. And that, so that, so that, it's not like a revolving loan fund, but it's, there's something akin to that, so that you would have people coming on full, on the full tax rolls, while other people would be going on the stabilized. Now, it's important to note that the County of Clinton Industrial Development Agency, which is affiliated with our organization, has a uniform tax exemption policy which is probably among the most least liberal in New York State. It's very much not a giveaway situation. The way the stabilized tax policy works is that, that your, your building is assessed at full value in year number one. And then that rate is frozen over the period of the, the bonds. And if people pay off their bonds early, then it comes off the stabilized rate early. Different from other IDAs which have all kinds of different scenarios, some of which there are no taxes paid in the first two or three years. I'm, I'm not sure what the, the Champaign, County of Champlain's IDA is, but I know it's different from ours. Ours is relatively conservative.
What happens if you have someone that owns a property and, say it's a year two, year three, whatever, if they're on sale, does that start the clock over again?
It, no, it depends if they assume the bonds or not. So, no, it does not.
So they don't start again, from that point at 15 years?
Unless they would come back to the IDA, and there would have to be a public hearing, and... But my understanding is no. We had, we had a project in the town of Plattsburgh that was a building we owned, that we were going to sell. And much more difficult to get industrial revenue bonds for existing buildings. It's much more, it's much easier to be for new buildings. So, so I don't know, I, I will find out the specific answer in our, in our uniform tax exemption policy. I think, Melissa, you've got a copy of that uniform tax exemption policy.
I think we all got it.
It's pretty conservative kind of thing. Full assessment in year one, out to year 15.
I really prefer the way you do it to some of these other plans, because one of the criticisms, and there has been some truth to this, that if it's a staggered type of thing, then, well, what's, a company will hold on to something while they're not paying any tax, and as soon as they have to start paying something, you get rid of it, and then you're out of the lot.
And so we have adopted this, it was, has been our longtime policy, and I think with the exception of one IDA project that's not in our project, not in Plattsburgh and not in Champlain, but in the city of Plattsburgh, every other IDA deal we've had has been with this policy, and we adopted it formally last year. We, so, you know, it's, it's a pretty, we feel that we don't want to set a precedent of giving some people what might appear to be a better deal. This is the deal that we have, we think it's a good one, we think it makes it worthwhile for, for you to, to come to the IDA. And we have people who came before you, and we don't want to, to change the parameters of their deal by giving you something better.
Let me just throw out another hypothetical. I like these kind of scenarios. Is it possible, say, to come to the end of the term, right, and make some kind of confinement there, and essentially redefine the business on a piece of paper, doing the same thing, and then reapply for exemption?
I, I don't believe that's possible, but I will check, not a lawyer, but I don't believe that's possible.
I think that's been done other places, I think that's why, why you're saying that in, in other, not too far prepared. And likewise, for selling the business, the same kind of thing, either changing a name or selling the business, which, you know, gives them...
I have a teleconference with our bond council tomorrow, and I will talk specifically about it.
What I was talking with Steve about was the hydrants, and he had it specified as just mowers, and we do have lockers. And, you know, I just don't want to see us maintain three kinds of hydrants and have to start three kinds of pass, but we do start two, it's fine, but whoever bids it and builds it, they have the option for one or the other.
It's not a problem.
So it's just a...
It's a little fancy there.
No, it's, it's, there's no difference in price, there's nothing.
It's a bit tricky.
That's right.
Coming back to the road, what's the status of the unfinished section that goes down the prospect? That you mentioned, just gravel, is that going to be closed to traffic? Will it be traffic on it? Will, we have to maintain it?
I don't know whether, maybe it should be an emergency exit, or something, I mean...
Yeah, I don't think, you hate to close it to traffic, but then if you don't, what's going to happen? You're going to end up...
I'm going to volunteer.
That's right, and you're going to justify your disrepairment.
But I'm thinking of maintaining, I think like winter snow removal and sanding and...
And it would be subject to the same kind of compaction? It would be subject to the same kind of compaction that it would do for the...
But you still, over time, that gravel road, everybody knows that gravel road looks like time. Not very good.
If it stops at a certain point for snow removal, how are you gonna turn around? I guess that's...
Well, if that were the case, and you didn't want it to fall through, what we'd have to do is put a temporary turnaround in there. Either hammerhead or call the sack with the, with the snow push out the end of it.
I prefer...
We would let, we decide what... We were trying to be responsive in having this open as much as we could.
Right, I understand that.
And, and if we did, could do it. I mean, we would be delighted by the way down to Plattsburgh.
Or it could be something that would be closed seasonally, too.
That, that's another option.
When, when do you want to do this paving?
Well, we had hoped to do it this year, but I don't see that as a possibility.
By the time, depending on how the grant application goes, and say, we're awarded the grant, this year, this construction season is probably going to be gone. You'd have to be in design, almost in the design, or you're now going up to bid.
And, and, you know, we are making the deadline. I mean, we didn't set this deadline. It's their deadline. So for us...
Are you talking to gravel paving, this section?
No, what I, what my, well, the reason why I ask you that is we're getting ready to do, or hoping to do, two streets in our village, Church Street and Prospect Street. I don't know what the legal ramifications are of this, because I don't. But maybe it would be possible to jointly contract all three projects out and...
Well, yeah, we have to be, we have to be prepared on the job anyway because it's the IDA grant. We could certainly look into the legal ramifications.
Yeah.
I don't think you want to do that.
You don't have to be.
I don't, I'm not sure. Yeah, she will because you have federal money.
Yes, we have to be.
We're doing this...
Goes down.
But, but, but you might want to do it as, bid it as a bid alternate, so that if you get a good bid...
See, I mean, because what I'm thinking about is, I mean, we'd be free to contract with you guys to do something.
I, I would think that maybe you might want to include it as a bid alternate. And then you can see what kind of a bid you get. And you don't, with a bid alt, bid alternate, you never have to take it if you don't want to. You usually get a little bit higher bid if you go with a bid alternate.
Not always, though.
But sometimes it helps. I need to talk with our attorney about that. He and Jim, is it okay for, I have more. Just call Jim.
Okay, I'm, uh, what's that? Let's see. You have attachment E, the appendix A, part one, part two. Is that complete as is?
I tried to tell him today about what, I will get up here tomorrow if we need some signature from you. He did not send us anything. And he did send us, every, every officer of our corporation asked to fill out a background check with, it's like ten of them. People are bored, and, what is this? We're required to do that. So I, I didn't get him, I called him last afternoon.
There were some papers that, not like this, but there were some other things that I signed and sent down.
Already?
Already.
Okay, he probably sent, he sent us some, these are the things that you need to do. And, and we sent those down. But I'll confirm that again. I tried to this afternoon. I'm sorry if you... But we will make this one change to the, to the pavement. And, um, get this to him overnight now, tomorrow. He has a preliminary view of it, which we sent him last week. So, um, I don't think that there's anything else. He's not sent me anything else. But the last time we, we had your name and Jerry's name on the same piece of paper. I saw it.
So then this should be ready to go in.
Yeah. Luckily, Steve wasn't gonna go on vacation.
Yeah.
That's the first thing I said to him the next morning. I said, when were you planning to go on vacation?
Last week, no.
I think it's next week, right?
August.
You won't be honest.
That's right.
But we are hoping that our, our content, if they let us know quickly, we will get, we're starting into our final design now. And we would hope to go out to bid as quickly as we could and then have the project start those things from, if we can do it this year. And try to...
This would be a good year because prices are, if you gotta build anything, this is a good year to do it.
There's not a lot of activity. We have in our Plattsburgh park, somebody's been talking for six months about building a building and has decided not to do it. And we have contractors calling, when is that going out to bid?
It's a huge project. It's a huge project, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good time.
Totally a good time. So if there aren't any other questions?
Well, um, I don't know. We still have the camera going. I don't think we turned it off for five minutes or not. But I spoke to you on the phone about this other thing.
Yes.
Can we just turn it off for five minutes? At this stage of the meeting, we're looking at old business. And the first item of the business is a request for a drainage tile. Have you done anything, have more information on that?
I thought you basically said no last meeting. That's surprising to even say no.
Well, I don't think we made a decision. I took a write-up and, and looked. And I wa, I wasn't clear what the plan was in terms of what that was going to accomplish for drainage. I was asking Bob some questions before the meeting. So I think maybe what we might need to do is, is to get some sort of a sketch and, and an explanation of what, I couldn't see what the tile was going to do.
I think the easiest thing is we just give him all the info and explain it to you.
Okay.
A sketch from what he explains.
Okay.
Is this on private property or on public property?
It's on a public property. You own, you have right of being a public. That's a relatively narrow right of. Not, not a right of. You have to be titled for that.
Okay. Second item is, sounds similar, water charges, water and sewer charges.
Now, I guess this was requested, and we got, we received a letter the day of our last meeting. So people probably didn't have a good chance to look at it. And I've kind of taken a look down there. There is a partial building, so they're like superintendent solvent, as, as mentioned. And you have had a couple of letters stating that the, the building should be either tore down or repaired. And nothing's been done. And there is a school bus that are now loaded with all kinds of things. I'm not sure exactly what, how to get that close. When I was, had a conversation with this gentleman, he said that the building was down and there was nothing there. Well, there is still something there. So I don't know if there's a building there, a partial building. But I don't see where we can...
The building doesn't have anything to do with the, the water and sewer fee. The fact that it's connected is the reason why, or, or available to service. If that connection were cut out of there essentially, that's when the people would stop being charged, correct? No?
Yeah, if there's a building, then assess the service charge.
Right, if there, if there's a vacant lot and one runs by, I don't think they get assessed the service charge.
We have empty buildings, buildings that have no water whatsoever to, to pay a service charge.
Okay.
That's your law. That's the way your law reads, that's the way it...
So maybe, uh, well, we can have, write a letter to the correspondent referencing our law and thanking him for suggestion or whatever that, something we would look at as we revise fees and look at our fees that we plan to do another year or so.
We may want to send attached a couple of copies of the, the letters that were sent back in December of ninety-four stating what Bob has, has said to him in the past.
And it makes no difference, if the person came in and tore up the lines leading to the building, it wouldn't make any difference.
This property is assessed to water and sewer fee? No, one, one water and sewer. Oh, okay. So there's a house that sits up front.
That's different.
That gets, okay. And then the, it's the old building in the back that was partially destroyed by fire.
Is the old building being serviced at a commercial rate?
No.
That's being serviced at a residential rate?
Right, seriously, no. So when, when he asks what he could do to alter the status quo, under our current law, would be remove the building?
Yeah.
And then that would eliminate the service charge. We might want to save that in the letters.
Right.
Do we have to write this one or do you want to?
At least we'll get a letter written, anyway. Okay, there any other old business?
Something that, that I forgot to mention in my report. The beautification committee went around the village and looked at possible projects. And the one thing they were concerned about was overgrown ditches. And Mary Ann asked me about whose responsibility the ditches were. I've been wondering if the village, if they were ours, if we would go ahead and trim them. And I told her that they are the responsibility of the property owner. And so she's, you know, was wondering what, what we could do to try to get the ditches mowed. Maybe just another announcement that, under our property maintenance law, is the responsibility of the property owner. But if that doesn't work, then they have to look at letters.
Uh, seems to be some improvement, but it's sporadic. Okay, there is no other old business. On the new business, two items that we believe were given out at the last board meeting. One is from the zoning board of appeals and suggestions for us to consider to amend the zoning law in order to deal with the amount of individual mobile homes. There are a lot of specifications for a mobile home park or clusters, but not for individual ones. So if you haven't looked at that, we can look at that and discuss that at the next meeting. Also, we have a memorandum from the planning board for a P schedule. And we have run into some problems with the P schedule that exists. So again, if we can take a look at those. And if we need any more information, I'm sure that the zoning board of appeals or the planning board would be very happy to respond to questions. Is there any other new business?
Well, just as, actually, if I can say something about really an old business that's kind of a new business in a sense, or, or might be a new business when we get around to it. I got a call today from Linda Keeble, you know, concerning the agreement that hopefully the town, the village will sign concerning, concerning the disputed water and sewer that are out there. And hopefully that will be along later on this week. I don't have any information in terms of a specific...
Who is Linda Keeble?
It's the secretary.
Oh, okay.
This is...
We have an agreement on...
We don't have an agreement yet, but he's writing an agreement.
What a draft agreement.
Based on, what are the, the details of it?
Basically for arbitration.
What, uh, we, did we ever receive anything in terms of the billing information that we requested?
Makes me very curious as to why.
So, I'm sorry. Have we agreed with the town to go to arbitration?
Not, not formally. I've spoken with the supervisor. You know, our, our board hasn't voted to neither is theirs to do that. But it appears from what I can see that the boards are gonna have to agree to disagree. I'm really honest with you.
Could we agree to get the billing records? I thought we were supposed to.
Because my impression of they said...
The supervisor told you, oh, we would get that right out to you. And that was two weeks ago?
San Harriet's bizarre.
What's the cost of the arbitration?
I don't know what the cost would be for arbitration. That would be up to the discretion of the arbitrator, actually, you know, the set of fee.
And I think at this point, we have to see what, what is proposed and get some reaction from this board. See what the town board thinks about something before any agreement is signed.
Perhaps, if, being, I would like to see, I guess, the billing records. If we told you, yeah, could we, could we write another letter saying, you know...
Why don't we do this? We've written one letter. If I can make a phone call and see, well, follow up on that as opposed to a...
That's fine. But, you know, a paper trail. I'm beginning to think there might be a reason why we can't see the billing records.
Do you think it would be better to send a letter?
You can try, you can try on your phone call.
That's fine.
And then, and any letter after that, if necessary.
And I guess what I would like to see is the gallons that the town billed and rate in the dollar bills that were collected. That's what I mean. When I say billing records, I want to see what was billed to the town's customers. We know what we billed our customer. I want to know what they billed to theirs with the gallons and the rates and the dollar bills.
And I suppose if we do choose to go to arbitration, that's all information that would be significant to the arbitration. It's not like we're asking you something that a fact finder wouldn't want, I would imagine.
Should be public record. Freedom of information. We shouldn't have to do that.
Okay, any other, any other new business? Not, motion to pay more, just presented today. Okay, second?
Second.
Motion paid by trustee Dela, second by trustee Connor. Call in favor?
All right.
We can keep the warrant like that on you here. Nice, fine, yes, again.
Okay, if there's any other business, then, motion to adjourn?
No, there's an executive session.
Oh, sorry.
Make the move on executive session.
Right, okay. So a motion to adjourn from executive session?
So?
Second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.